Hey everyone, good morning. Welcome to the Daily Drop In Morning Show where the Teach Better Team is live every single morning, Monday through Friday at 7:00 AM Eastern. We love to be able to welcome in your morning, bring you some good news, some celebrations, and also talk shop about education. It is Thursday, December 23rd. Many, 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 and most educators are celebrating a winter break right now, especially with the excitement of the Christian holiday coming up with the new year. So we hope that you are celebrating in the comfort of your own home, maybe with some cozy socks, and very active in commenting this morning, or even if you're listening to us after the fact on Teach Better Talk Podcast, we're thrilled that you are here. We are going to be right back to get our show started. Please go fill up your coffee or hot chocolate, whatever you're drinking this morning, and we're excited to kick off this Thursday with you. Morning, everyone. It is Thursday, December 23rd, and we are so excited to be kicking off your morning with Daily Drop-In. We have an incredible guest with us, LaShonda West. I've been telling you about this woman for all week. I'm so excited for you to meet her. She's a new member of our Teach Better community, and LaShonda, I'd love to have you introduce yourself.
Good morning. I am LaShonda West. I teach down in Miami-Dade County, Florida. Been teaching for 20 years, social studies. I love teaching. I started off as a middle school teacher at Centennial and progressed to Cutler Basin High. My favorite subject is civics. If you don't empower people to voice their opinions and engage in government, I think that you are a lost society. So education and democracy are two of my greatest passions.
Oh my gosh, I cannot wait to dive into all that. That was the, that's going to be a clip that Chris is going to use on our Teach Better team after this airs to promo this conversation, because that was such a perfect snippet into your passion, what you're excited about. And LaShonda, I'm so excited you're here, because a lot of our network hasn't connected with you yet, and you are very active on Twitter is where we connected. You're active on social media, and I want to make sure that we continue this conversation. So thank you for waking up bright and early to talk to us this morning.
Thank you for having me.
So tell us a little bit about where you're streaming from. I believe you're in Florida. Florida is what you said, right? So it is early there. You're probably on winter break. Tell us a little bit about your morning so far.
So I am a teacher, a wife of a teacher, and a mommy of three children, and they all are asleep, thank goodness, because it will be chaotic. So down in Miami, Florida, when I woke up, it was about 59 degrees, and as you said, we are on winter recess, the whole family. So we are enjoying just relaxing and chilling. As the audience should know, we're still in the midst of COVID-19, so it does take a toll on teachers, parents, and children alike. So having some downtime these two weeks is so welcomed.
You're so right, and I'm glad that you emphasized that, because I think so many of us, you know, see this break as a wonderful opportunity to connect with family, but also remembering that it is a time to reset, rejuvenate, and safely see family, which is an extremely important emphasis. I'm very impressed that your three kids are still sleeping, though. So we're going to keep celebrating that. Hopefully throughout the show, we don't wake them up, but I really appreciate you waking up bright and early on your break to talk to us. I know that there was a lot of scheduling involved, and you choosing to pick December 23rd, I knew was going to be a good show, because this is a great day to be able to talk shop as people are enjoying their winter recess, like you said. So I love it. So cool. What brought you to Florida originally? Have you been there a long time?
So I was born in Laura, Mississippi. My mom is one of 15 kids from Mississippi. She wanted better opportunities. She was raised on a farm. Her parents, bare minimum education. We're heavily raised in the church. My grandfather was a preacher. And so my mom appreciates religion, and she stayed very active in the church, but she wanted something different. She wanted a city life. That's why we're in Miami. And I've been in Miami since I was three years old, so a couple decades now. My whole formal schooling is within the Miami-Dade County Public School District, and I haven't looked back. I do visit my home state, but I love Miami.
Miami is wonderful, and I tell you, while 58 degrees in Florida sounds cold, it was 22 degrees where I am in Chicago this morning, to the point that I was a terrible dog mom. I didn't even let my dogs out this morning, because I was like, boys, it's too cold, and I gotta go to Daily Drop-In. So I think I need to move to Florida.
We welcome you.
Oh my gosh, you're so wonderful. We are getting some comments this morning. People are so excited you're here, LaShonda, and of course, to our community, we are thrilled that you're starting your morning with us. We always love to be a part of some goofy conversation, but also to bring you some educational talking, you know, educational talk shop a little bit, and then dive into some holidays and some good news articles, which we'll get to here soon. Alex Valencic is saying, "Good morning." Here in the comments, we have a lot of people on our private Facebook group saying, "Good morning." And then Brad Hughes is being so sweet, throwing up your Twitter handle. LaShonda, tell us a little bit about how you got onto Twitter, because that's where I have been connected with all the things that you're doing. I'd love to hear about your journey on social media, if you don't mind sharing a little bit.
So I have been on social media. I'll give you some part of my age. I started on social media when there was MySpace, before the Facebook, before the Twitter. I just believe in having a public presence. I did send off some information to Teach Better. At one point in my eighth grade education experience, I desired to be President of the United States. That is no longer a goal, but knowing that I want to influence public policies and just engage with the public, that's pretty much what I do mostly on Twitter. And on Facebook, I share some family photos and show the human side of me as well.
I really, and I really do appreciate that. You know, we have a lot of different suggestions of how our community can get connected on social media, and there's this activity where we take our, it's in our Teach Better Academy, we take our participants through kind of identifying what they want their profile to be like, and something we talk about is finding that balance between sharing your professional life on your professional profile, but also sharing some humility about yourself, a little bit of that personal flair as well. And I've really enjoyed following you, connecting with you on Twitter especially, to learn about what you're passionate about, not only your family, but obviously all these other areas in education. However, I do think maybe you should still go for the president thing. I don't know. I just have a feeling, maybe that's a good move for you.
It sounds good. For now, I am sticking to local. This is not a campaign pitch, but I am gonna put my head in for school board. So you'll see more of that on Twitter.
Okay, that is something I saw, and when I was, especially when I was looking at your profile this morning, can I ask all the stupid questions? Because truly, I always joke on the show that everybody in the audience probably already knows all the things I'm going to ask, but I'm going to ask the ridiculous questions just to confirm all the pieces. But tell me a little bit, you're an educator. Can you run for the school board? What does it mean to run for the school board? Some educators work in public education especially, and never really know what the school board does. So I know they just threw like 25 questions at you, but give us a little bit of background of not only what it is, but why you think that that's a good move for you.
So I've been living in North Miami, on the opposite of the county line where I used to live for about seven years. I have never met my school board member, and it's not to disrespect her. She's been serving, this will go on to her fourth term. I've met almost every school board member, and we have several. And so I just feel like sometimes we have to hold, well, we should do it all the time, but in this case, hold our elected leaders accountable. I am a teacher within the school district. I am a voting member of the school district, and again, have not met her. So that was one of my motivations for running. Another motivation is I'm a forward thinker, and I try to keep politics not only out of my classroom, but as a school board member, as a parent of students who go to my school district, I just know that some of the policy decisions that she made, I don't know if it's in the best interest of all children. So that's my story. I can still be a teacher as long as I keep my teaching certificate updated with the state of Florida. I would be out of the classroom for four years, so you can't teach and be on the school board, because there's a conflict of interest. But otherwise, if I serve that one term or multiple terms, just, you know, going back to teach somewhere to keep the license like current, it will be fine.
Well, and that was my question. I really appreciate you clarifying that. That is so neat. I have to tell you, one of my favorite things when I was teaching in my most recent district was we had a very, very active school board, and I had no idea what they did. I just knew that they were somehow important, related to the superintendent in some way. Truly, I had no context. But I did a lot of community work where we brought the community into the classroom, and they always participated, always. Those school board members were in my classroom, I think, like five, six times a year at minimum for different little community events. We did pop-up restaurants and NASA explorations, and they always participated. And I thought that was so neat that they chose to be so active. There was 24 buildings in the district I was working in. I'm one little classroom in one little middle school, and they really made it a priority. So shout out to those board members that are so active and truly understanding not only their community, but the schools that they serve. I think that's such a wonderful approach that you have, that you want to truly represent this, this community, because you know the community, you live in the community, you care about the community.
Absolutely.
Can I know the inner workings of what it means to run for the school board? I'm sorry, I've just never been able to have this conversation before. You obviously made this decision. You have the passion, you have the mindset. What do you have to do? Is there like, like a checklist that you develop?
Literally, they don't give you a checklist, but they should. It is a process. I have a degree in political science, and I've read so many books, but this process, it kind of discourages the common person to run, unfortunately. I'm sure it's an unintended consequence, but yes. The first thing you do obviously is to apply, to make sure you qualify to be in your district, which I did check. The second thing is you announce your candidacy. So I'm in the announcing phase, because you have to raise money, make sure you have the people, not the corporations, but the people on board, and representing all people. My school district is majority African-American or African descent, but we do have a large population of other ethnic groups, and I know that they have a voice at the table. So knocking on the doors, obviously canvassing is what, one of those major parts of being a grassroots candidate entails. So that's a check mark. Paying the fee to run for office is another check. And then, once you pay the fee and you qualify, then your name gets on the ballot, but it's not over. You campaign for whatever period remains. So it is a process, and it's worth it. So if you have that mindset, or if you feel like you're that change maker, this is for you as well.
So LaShonda, I know I'm not, I don't live in the community with you. I'm not a voting element of this whole, of your campaign, but I want to follow it. So what is the, what's the timeline? How can our Teach Better Network support you virtually, right, from all around the world, and follow your journey, follow your story? Will you know by April? How does that, how does that process work?
So right now, as I said, I'm in that announcement phase. I think what the public should hear is that I teach it hard. My credentials, that I'm just not one person who's, oh, I have a lot of thoughts, or I have this passion, but I don't have the experience, because that's what some of the people are like. Well, she's deeply rooted in the community, and she's done all of this for certain schools. So just getting that message that change is, is good. Don't be afraid of change. And then if you support my, my background, and if you support me, then giving me that presence on social media, it does help. So that credibility, the credibility piece, yes.
Wait, so you're saying the Teach Better community can help by following you, being an active part of your professional learning network, which is something that we advocate all the time, liking, retweeting, things that we agree with on your profile, things that we support, that we want to amplify your voice. Friends, this is good. I love being able to support our community even from afar. So I'm very excited to hear more about this. I appreciate you answering my silly questions, but I've just never had an opportunity to speak to somebody that is taking on, or striving to take on this responsibility, and an educator doing it. I've never met a board member that, that was an educator by trade, and I think that says so much about how we can support the community. So thank you for doing this. I'm so excited to follow your journey.
Thank you so much.
You know, one of the members, or one of the elements you said, I want to get into in our brainstorm bank, but I am seeing that some of our network here has questions for you, again, similar to being interested in what you're discussing, wanting to learn more. And if you don't mind, I'd love to address Alex's question. I think this is a totally appropriate question. I don't even know the answer to this myself. It says, "Are board members in your district paid, or is it unpaid like it is in Illinois?" I didn't even know it was unpaid in Illinois. So is it unpaid everywhere, or unpaid state by state? How's that work?
So for the Miami-Dade County Public School District, we are paid our teacher-based salary. So whatever that salary is, so for example, $40,000, that's what I would get paid. Being that I teach six periods, which is a full schedule at my school, I would lose supplements like that, or my education credentials. I have an education specialist degree. So I stand to lose money, but it is not about the money. It's about making change, and I stick to that. I am a forward thinker, and I want to use my voice to make that change.
Oh, so good, so good. Is this, is this something, I know you have to leave your teaching position to serve, which, which so does make sense. I appreciate you clarifying that. But do other people have to leave their roles and responsibilities outside of being a board member, or are they all right to, to work and also serve as a board member?
So if you have a private business, whether it's small or large, you can continue managing, operating those businesses and collecting that paycheck on top of the school board paycheck. And I am at a disadvantage. My job is solely to teach. So I'll be fine. I prayed about it, and I felt like God said, "This is your time." I've been wanting to do this forever, and so I have the courage now, and I'm doing it.
We're so excited to support you. I'm so excited for this. I will say, I think serving as a board member is, is so, so incredible. I cannot wait for our community to follow your journey. But if I'm a classroom teacher listening to this, and let's pretend I'm not in Florida, I'm not in Illinois, and I'm just listening to this incredible goal that you have, and I want to maybe connect with my own board members in the school district I work with, do you have any idea on how they can do that? I'm not even sure what to recommend, especially since some board members, as you know, you even shared earlier, are quite disconnected possibly from their community or from specific schools themselves within the district. So if I'm a teacher and I'm thinking, huh, I don't even know that I have a board, maybe I should go connect with them. Any ideas?
So there's several ways to connect with your school board member, especially if he, she, or they are active. The first way is through social media, so they do have a presence if they are comfortable with technology. Another method is going to a school board meeting. You can sign up to speak. I've spoken at school board meetings. One of the most memorable topics I spoke about is breastfeeding, because one of my, my middle son, I was worried that I wouldn't have time to breastfeed him, still transitioning into that middle-year teaching experience, because he's 13. So there were several concerned mothers who are educators who spoke. So that gave me a direct connection to the school board. So I think those two are one of the best methods to connect with the school board through social media and actually attending a school board meeting.
Yeah, and those are open. So if you're an educator, you've never been to a school board meeting, that's actually a really good goal to do for yourself. Many of them continue to be virtual, especially depending on what the agenda is for the meeting. So you can even join via Zoom, or if they're streaming on YouTube, that could be a good option for you. Just got to look at what your district's doing. And for those who that might also be interested, some of the simplest and easiest ways to start might be just visiting your school district's website. Typically, the board members are listed. They have emails that are listed. You can see pictures, possibly even, you know, their full name and contact information. So again, there's so many different ways to be a connected educator. And as we've shared on this show numerous times, being a connected educator doesn't mean only to other educators that have a similar mindset than you, or do a similar profession than you, or really wanting to expand that. School board members are incredible opportunities. So LaShonda, I feel like you've provided us such a different perspective on the show than we typically have. I'm so thrilled that you were willing to talk about this. This is so important.
Thank you for having me.
So fun. I want to get into this a little bit deeper. You obviously have such a passion for being in the trenches educator currently with students. You're one of, I'd love to hear your perspective on how you are taking break to refocus, rejuvenate from a very, very stressful, stressful semester, I can only imagine. And you noted your passion for being a very forward thinker, and how that's not only supporting you as a board member, but as an educator. So we're going to get into all of that. We're in transition here into our brainstorm bank, but we'll be right back. Hey friends, welcome back from the Daily Drop-In. We are thrilled that you are here, starting our morning with us. The comments have been so, so busy, and that just really emphasizes the importance of not only what you are sharing, LaShonda, but also our community showing up and being active in their learning. We joke that there are two different ways to be a learner here on the show. You can sit back and just consume and listen and not really engage, or you can choose to be an active participant in what we are discussing, and we really, really appreciate when you are sharing your voice, so we can also amplify the work that all of you are doing. As you guys know, if you're watching the show live, we'd love to participate, or if you're even listening after the fact, take a screenshot, share with us that you're listening. LaShonda and I are both on social media. We'd love for you to tag us so that we can continue to engage with you regardless of how you are choosing to be a part of the Teach Better Team community. LaShonda, this brainstorm bank segment is something we do every single show, and it's really just an intentional time to remind our community that they're not teaching on an island, that no matter what you might need to brainstorm, what you might need to problem solve, we can be here to support you. LaShonda and I are in no way saying that we will have the right answer, but we love to brainstorm. So hopefully, we can direct you in the right direction. So if you are currently brainstorming anything, whether it's how you're going to utilize your break, how you might come back stronger from your break, brainstorming a, a conflict or something, building a relationship with a colleague, supporting your leadership, being a leader, supporting your staff, whatever it is, please feel free to include that in the chat. We'd love to be here to support you. LaShonda, you have a lot of different passions. I know we've been able to focus on the, the element of you running as a board member, which is so, so exciting. But tell us a little bit about why you became a teacher, and the things that really fuel you day to day in your job.
So this is an interesting story. My undergrad is in political science. So at one point, I was tracked to go to law school and just be in the thick of public policy and law. I volunteer then and now for different community organizations. So one of the organizations at the time was the YMCA. I had my oldest son playing basketball and other different sports. So from time to time, they would allow me to coach, like cheerleading, things that connected to me. So I ran into my high school math teacher, and I was her daughter's cheer coach. And she's like, "You have so much patience, and I see you love children. Why aren't you teaching? I know you have a degree." I was like, "I never thought about it. Like, I'm one of five kids. Why do I want to be around other kids?" You know, we joked about it. Say, "Listen, just give it a try and go from there." And so I never looked back. I started substitute teaching, and then I got hired by my high school dance teacher at Centennial Middle School. And it's been 20 years. Obviously, there have been challenges even beyond COVID-19. I started teaching in 2001. As we know, 9/11 happened. So being a brand-new teacher, not having an education background, that was my first time, "Am I cut out for this?" Right? So I couldn't cry, because I was too new, and I didn't know how the kids would react. So I had to keep it together. I had an uncle at the time working for the Pentagon, and so I'm worried about him. I'm worried about everyone, and keeping it together for myself, it was just, it was, it was a journey that year alone. And so I, again, I've been teaching secondary social studies since then. I had mentors in my life, because without support, it does make it a lot of, the obstacles are heavy to bear. So when you have the supporting factor, teaching is so rewarding. It's beyond just your daily challenges, impressing those life and the, the life learners that you want them to be. So that's pretty much my story of why I became a teacher and why I haven't looked back.
That is an enormous, fabulous story, but an enormous undertaking. I mean, truly, when you're looking at any first-year teacher's first year, every educator will tell you, there was something crazy that happened, that they all, you know, we all walked into our classroom and closed the door, closed the door, and had moments of stress, or tears were shed and, and everything else. To imagine two months or a month into the school year and 9/11 being something that you're, you're, you're struggling with, and then holy moly, sticking through it. I mean, talk about perseverance. I do have to say, so many of us that continue to support students are having a very, very tough year. I know I've had so many conversations with educators that, you know, have even said, "This year is worse than last year," and we really expected that it would just really, truly get better after the, you know, 2020 school year. And, but I really appreciate you reminding us that perseverance is such an important element of being a teacher, and that the work that we do is so much more important than the hurdles that are in front of us. How has this year been for you as an educator?
So after dealing with the complications of COVID-19, we started out the school year face-to-face and brick and mortar. I just, it prepares me, it prepared me for the unknown, right? So I do like technology. I'm the IPREP Academy leader at Cutler Basin High School. So the technology pieces that we had to deal with wasn't the concern. I get my energy for teaching, seeing the faces of my students, knowing that, hey, I care. So let's start off the day talking about how we feel, what's going on, because I know if you're not feeling well, you're not hearing anything I say in terms of content. So yeah, pretty much, you just got to teach it hard, and keep in mind that the mental health for your students and yourself, it matters. So yeah.
You know, something that we've been talking about all week, our theme this week has been kind of like resetting the fundamentals of classroom management. We're not looking to necessarily share these big ideas that nobody's thought about. This week is truly about, what are the pillars? What are the core elements that, when we all head back, when we're really excited to see our students, and we're kicking off the new year, 2022, what are those core fundamentals of strong classroom management practices that we can ensure we utilize right off the bat to have a successful next semester? With your work being back in the classroom, working with your students, what do you feel like is one of the best classroom management elements that you've chosen to implement that has helped you be successful?
So it wasn't going back to normal, just starting your day off with like bell ringers or teaching. You have to start those conversations of how you're feeling. So we do wellness check at the beginning of our block. It's a two-hour block for each class, and then we have a wellness break, about 10 minutes. Meditation works for some classrooms. My students are like, "That's not for us." So they hydrate, they stand up, they talk and be kids, you know. We are a high-performing school. So even if we don't know, it's, it's a lot of pressure to meet the expectations attending our school. So on top of like that learning lag for the last two, two and a half years, we just have to be mindful of the practices we do in the classroom. So I encourage educators, if you haven't thought about it, what wellness practices you can incorporate in your classroom to just show that your kids, your students, that you care, and that it's not just about academics.
Yeah, and I, I love your focus on doing a wellness check at the beginning, but also as needed throughout. I mean, a two-hour block of time is an enormous amount of time for your students to focus 100% of their energy on learning. And so when you're looking at taking a wellness check that'll lay at the beginning of the day, but also throughout, you know, taking the pulse of what your students need, doing it as a whole group, it's really important. I think the emphasis on classroom management that we've had all week has been, okay, focus on routines, focus on the first five minutes, focus on the phases of your classroom. This is something that you really can do to see the human element of the students in your classroom, and I really appreciate that your focus on wellness is not just having a structured opportunity for students like meditation. I do, I have seen that work, depending on your student body, but standing up, hydrating is a perfect use of your wellness check. That is not, you know, some, I think some teachers would be like, "Oh, it's unstructured time." Well, no, it's, it's good wellness. I'd love to hear you speak to that a little bit more.
So for the, the couple of months that we've been in school, our, our school does not have the typical water fountain anymore. We are used, like encouraging the students to use the reusable bottles, right? So one and at a time, they can go get the refill of the water bottles, or they have these little conversations, whether it's academic-related, student-driven. So it's unstructured and structured in terms of like not telling the students what to do. You have two hours in class, you, in a democratic society, as well as your classroom, you, you release some of that control. It's not chaotic as long as you have expectations, because I don't have rules. Rules can be punitive, right? But if you have expectations that, you know, you can't get loud, it's not a time to be super obnoxious. If you need to listen to some classical music, put on your headphones. If you just need to talk about what you did this weekend, so that you just breathe and take a break, I just think that- I, I just think that, that's, uh, that works for me. It may not work for everyone because, you know, depending on your classroom and the setup. But my classroom is not a traditional classroom, so the expectations are clear. Uh, I teach you, I treat you like adults, even though you're in ninth and tenth grade. And so the expectations, whether it's instruction time or non-instruction time, you, you're expected to behave a certain way.
Well, and I think that your understanding and your emphasis on having expectations to allow for this time to, to be something that can really be utilized intentionally for your students is phenomenal. You know, I've heard so many educators share with me that they don't ever want some, you know, a principal or a leader to walk in and have their classroom look like they're not doing work. And my emphasis is always that, you know, we are teaching human beings, regardless of the tiny, tiny human beings or adult human beings. You know, we all take breaks at during long meetings. We all need time to have side conversations or pop on our piece of technology and really seeing the humility in our students and offering those opportunities. And then really allowing them to see the difference between social time, wellness time and intentional learning time. And understanding how to make that, that flip from one to the other is an incredible skill that you're teaching as well. Um, you know, I sat in a three-hour meeting yesterday and we, we took a five-minute break to use the restroom and grab a snack and check our phones. And, you know, that really is an opportunity that we have to not only teach our students academics, but, but teach them how to function in day-to-day life as well.
Absolutely.
You know, as we are looking at a few different things here, um, I do want to celebrate the fact that we have some holidays, some goofy holidays today that we always love to celebrate on the show and a good news article. So LaShonda, if it's all right with you, we are going to transition to our good news segment. I'm not sure your thoughts on celebrating, but I just think the more celebration we have in our lives, the better. So you up for a little celebration?
Absolutely.
All right, we'll be right back here with a good news article. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for popping in daily drop-in. The comments have been flowing. Good morning to everybody that is here. Uh, we really appreciate you sharing our feed, commenting and really engaging in our conversation, regardless if you're here with us live or after the fact. We have our last segment of our Thursday is always to share some good news and some celebrations, some holidays. And, uh, as I said earlier, LaShonda, I just really believe that any holiday is good to celebrate, even if it's not a holiday that we personally, you know, identify with as something that we celebrate. We can always celebrate in community with others. And there are some wacky holidays today that I think are worth noting. So one is a really interesting holiday. I'm excited to learn more about later today. Is there is a, a holiday that is Farmer's Day in India? So if any of us have an Indian, um, Indian student or a somebody that, you know, has a cultural background of, of that, I will let you know that today is Farmer's Day, uh, December twenty-third. It talks about all the different countries, economy. And I'm really excited to learn more about all the different elements of this celebration. So if you see that being celebrated around your community, uh, feel free to participate. We also have a little bit of some goofy holidays as many, many, um, not only Americans, but people around the world are choosing to celebrate the Christian holiday coming up. Today is National Christmas Movie Marathon Day. So I'm not sure what, what movies are on your list for a marathon, but we might need to start a list in the comments. If any of you have a favorite Christmas movie or a favorite holiday movie that you want to add in, I think we can make a pretty fun list here. LaShonda, do you have a favorite Christmas movie or holiday movie that, that you think might be a good fit for today's movie marathon day?
So all the Home Alone movies. Uh, my children, we watch them every Christmas, so it looks like we're going to be watching them today.
I think that's a great idea. I think truly Home Alone movies, there's a bunch of those. So you could fill in some, some prime real estate, some good hours doing that. I'd love to also hear if you are listening with us live, give us one of your favorite movies, just one. Uh, we'd love to hear it. If you want to provide two and be an overachiever on this Thursday morning, go for it. We'd love to hear your favorite movie that you'd recommend for our movie marathon. That'd be so fun. I personally am such a sucker. Have you ever seen White Christmas? I, I love the classics. It's so, so good, so good. The other holidays that are today, this is one I didn't know. I don't know if you'll know this one either. Um, I don't even know how to pronounce this. It looks like a cookie. I don't, I can't even pronounce it. P-F-E-F-F-E-R-N-U-S-S-E Day. It's a very delicious, appealing, and it even notes fairly easy to pronounce. It looks like a cookie. I don't know what this is. Do you know what this is?
Absolutely not.
I don't know what that is. I'm sure that some, somebody is going to pronounce that and, and say that like, I should have known what that was. I don't know. But for News Day, I mean, there's like, there's so many letters. I need somebody in the comments, maybe Alex, can you tell me? Nope, I couldn't even try. That's anyway. We're going to go celebrate that day because it looks like it's a yummy treat and I support anything that's easy and, and sweet to consume, right? That's a good thing. The last element, which I really loved, it kind of relates back to knowing your community. Uh, as we were talking about even the school board, today is World Roots Day. So really knowing your family's heritage, which I really, really love. So celebrating the history and ancestry that we all have and of those in our community. World Roots Day, kind of cool.
I love it. Yes.
I do want to also note a really sweet article I found this morning, something to celebrate. As many of you know, we love to use our, our good news articles to not only foster relationships with our students and our colleagues, but use them as little tidbits to share with our family. Um, and even on social media with our community. I've really loved this story. This is about an eleven-year-old boy. And I know we both are, our background originally was in middle level education. Eleven-year-old boy who saved two lives in one day, which is quite a audacious goal to set. I'm just saying. An eleven-year-old boy that was living in Oklahoma, saved two people's lives in one day, just hours apart. A public school official reported that they had a student that was choking in the middle of the week. And an incredible young boy, um, named, uh, Davion went over to rescue, um, the boy that was choking in the middle of the lunchroom, saving his life, which is such an incredible stressful, but incredible moment that, that happened together. Later that day, uh, Davion was walking by a burning home and rescued a woman from this fire. And as the police is reporting, the police had two separate police reports that this boy was a part of being the hero of the story. They named him as an honorary member of the police and sheriff department in that community, celebrating not only his bravery, but his commitment to staying calm under pressure. Davion's only eleven years old and said he immediately felt, um, a, a sense of responsibility to sprint into action as he saw that people were in need. And he did say in life, he wants to become an EMT, which is
Very nice.
Very fitting. So shout out to Davion and the incredible community he lives in in Oklahoma, celebrating the bravery of this eleven-year-old boy. It's incredible.
Absolutely.
So fun. You know, LaShonda, I know we've noted it in the beginning. I do want to make sure we note it again. I'd love for our community to connect with you, um, not only on Twitter, but wherever else they can connect with not only what you care about, but also the goals and aspirations you have, uh, for the upcoming year. Would you mind sharing a little bit about how they can connect with you, your social media handle? Anything else that you'd like to share?
So, um, as she mentioned, I am on Twitter. Uh, you can find me at LaShonda W. I am on Instagram, uh, because I'm in the three oh five, so that, uh, handle is a little different. It's Miss West three oh five. And then I am on LinkedIn. You just do LaShonda West and you'll find me there.
Wonderful. And yes, please go connect. As we've said numerous times on the show, we love bringing in new faces to our Teach Better community so that all of us here can continue to be connected educators, learning from those around us so we can better serve our students and, you know, brainstorm to be better for each other as well. It is Thursday, December twenty-third. I know many of us continue to celebrate some winter break or winter recess as we head into the new year. LaShonda, thank you so much for waking up early, talking shop and sharing so much insight. I know this, um, this episode had so many different layers and pieces that people are going to enjoy throughout the next few weeks. We really appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for having me.
Uh, so fun. For everybody else, I have a few reminders for all of you listening this morning. Don't forget that next week, daily drop-in is continuing Monday through Friday, but it looks a little bit different. We'll be building grids all week long, Monday through Friday, different content areas. Chad and I will be live with different guests all week long to dive into content-specific standards, breaking down those standards into targets, talking about different learning opportunities and how you can facilitate a mastery learning-focused classroom. So please feel free to join us or catch us after the fact. If you're choosing to sleep in, we understand, but that should be really, really fun. And it's all broken up by subjects that if you want to watch, depending on your grade level, you can, or depending on the subject you teach, there's going to be a lot of good discussion, elementary through secondary, um, on how you can implement successfully a mastery learning committed classroom. The other thing I want to note, LaShonda, we changed it up. This was originally going to be the last day of daily drop-in. We were taking off tomorrow morning. We were going to encourage all of you to sleep in and enjoy Christmas Eve. And then Brad Hughes, the Brad Hughes, a part of our team, decided to change it up, complain a little bit and he wants the show to go on. So we committed tomorrow morning, we'll be here bright and early to track Santa with you for Christmas Eve here on the daily drop-in. So we hope you all choose to join us. LaShonda, I thank you again so much, uh, for joining us. I hope everybody enjoys their last little sip of coffee as they head into this incredible Thursday. And of course, if you need anything, LaShonda and I are always here to support you. So please reach out and, and let us know. All right. Thanks so much, friends. Cheers. Have a wonderful day.